This conference will now be recorded.
Yes, sir.
I was just looking, you come across my screen as the 10D number nine, so just wondered if that was you.
My screen calls me G, but I don't know what you see.
Okay.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of Hasslet's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The date is Monday, March 29th, 2021. The time is 6:30 PM. And before we begin, I'm going to do roll call attendance to confirm the commissioners who have joined the meeting today and determine if we have a quorum present. Ms. Snedeker, are you present?
I am.
Thank you. Mr. Wallach.
Present.
Mr. Hillborn.
Present.
Mr. McCusson.
Present.
Mr. Flaxpart.
Present.
And the newly appointed Mr. Hayes.
Present.
And then Greg Katus, Chairman, is also present. So we do have a quorum present this evening. Moving to our first agenda item, which is administration administering the oath of office. Mr. Buchanan, you want to administer the oath of office for Mr. Hayes?
Good evening, Chair and Commission. Actually, Mr. Hayes came by City Hall today, and I administered the statement of officer and oath of office to him at that time. And so he is sworn in and ready to go.
Great. Well, thank you for volunteering your time, Mr. Hayes. We look forward to your participation.
Thank you.
Hey, great. You called Jim Markison?
I did.
Oh, I didn't hear. Is he here?
Okay, just a few notes of best practices for joining a teleconference meeting. So if you're not speaking, if you would try to do your best to keep your microphone muted, it will allow the conversation to go much smoother. And for those who need to hear the information, to hear that information so they can act on it appropriately. Another best practice is the proper use of the chat field. So when we open up public hearings, it's important for us to be able to have visibility to who would like to speak during those public hearings. So the use of the chat field isn't for just general comments and chat back and forth with other individuals on the call. It's really for the purpose of allowing me the ability to see who would like to speak during those public hearings. So please refrain from using it for any other purpose. And then lastly, you know, I will, if you do put your name in the chat field you wish to speak, I will call on you. And at that time, if you would just state your name and your address prior to speaking so that we have that for our records. Okay, next item on the agenda is to have a discussion regarding a recently appointed or approved ordinance 005-2021 relating to alternate member participation in meetings and recommended meeting procedures regarding the same. And we will begin with a staff presentation on this.
Yes, good evening, Chair and Commission. Our council approved this ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is to clarify the participation of alternate members during meetings. We've had several, you know, over the years, different staff, different recording secretaries, different staff liaisons that have interpreted how alternates vote, how they participate in meetings in different ways. And so this ordinance is so that we will all be on the same page and to avoid any confusion. And so at this time, in order to comply with the ordinance, we're recommending the following processes so that meeting minutes and recordings can reflect compliance with the ordinance. And so we will conduct roll call, and this will even be after we start meeting in person again. On the record, the Chair or Secretary will conduct roll call by calling each member's name, at which time the member will indicate present. If a regular member is absent, then the first alternate will serve in their place. The roll call conductor will actually state this for the record, such as regular member Smith is absent and alternate member Jones will serve in their place. If a second regular member is absent, then the second alternate will serve in their place. The same process is outlined or already stated. Will be repeated to name the absent regular member and the alternate member serving in their place for the meeting. In the event roll call is held and the meeting begins, and then a regular member arrives, the Chair will recognize the presence of the regular member. And if the Chair does not realize that, then the Secretary of the Board or staff will point it out to the Chair that the regular member has arrived. And then the Chair will announce that regular member Smith is now present and alternate member Jones will no longer serve in their place for this meeting. And so having given you that information, the Commission, you have two different options. You can just direct staff that your meetings will follow this process as a best practice, which requires no further action. Or you can request staff to prepare an amending ordinance to the zoning ordinance, Article 2, Procedures and Administrations, Section 2.2.2, which is for meetings and procedures for the Planning and Zoning Commission to add the recommended process to the ordinance. And so, you know, then it's actually in the ordinance and it has to be done. And if we were to have another Chair or a whole new board someday, you know, or new staff, everybody would still know how to do it if it's in the ordinance. So I, at this time, if you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
And to proceed, we need to make a motion to actually approve this or to recommend this approval. I guess it's our motion, so up to approval. Do we need to make a motion to do that?
Well, actually, this evening, we just, you don't need a motion. If you'll just have a discussion and direct staff how you want us to proceed, and then we will do as you direct us. Because we don't have an amending ordinance prepared at this time. We didn't want to go ahead and do that if that's not what the Commission desired. Okay.
Unless somebody else were to object, I think what the direction that the City Council is taking is a good direction and it would be a good model for us. Are there any other viewpoints on that from any other Commission members?
I have to agree. I think we should follow this.
Okay, well, I'm not hearing any objections. So I think, Ms. Buchanan, I think the direction is that the Planning and Zoning Commission will follow the direction that the President since it's been set forth by the City Council.
As in?
We will.
You want an amendment prepared to the ordinance for your consideration? Or we will just follow the best practices as outlined?
We will follow the best practices as outlined. And if you feel an ordinance is appropriate, then we would recommend we do that as well.
I think that the Commission is more than capable of following a best practice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So in the context of that decision, this evening, our alternates who are in attendance this evening are Mr. Flaxpart, Mr. Hayes, and we do have all the other Commission members present. So, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Flaxpart, you guys are certainly welcome to participate in the discussion and ask questions. When we do get around to voting on any proposed motions, then the voting would be limited to the regular members who are present this evening. But please don't limit your questions and thoughts and contributions because of that. Okay, moving on, Agenda Item 4, Items of Community Interest. The City Offices in the Hasslet Public Library will be closed from Friday, April 2nd through Sunday, April 4th. And that's in observance of Good Friday and the Easter holiday. The offices will reopen on Monday, April 5th. And then early voting in person begins on April 19th, and that will continue through April 27th. And that will be held at the former Hasslet Elementary School at 501 Schoolhouse Road. Are there any other comments for public interest items? Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 5. We have our February 22nd, 2021 regular meeting minutes available for review and seeking a motion to approve the minutes as written. Or if there are any amendments, please call those out.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion. We approve it as submitted.
This is Doreen. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So we've got a motion to approve as written. Is there a second?
Doreen will second.
Okay, do a roll call vote. It's been seconded. Ms. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Hillborn?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yes.
And Greg Katus is a yes as well. Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, 6A. Hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on a recommendation regarding a site plan for 350,000 square feet warehouse space located on the north side of Westport Parkway, approximately 0.5 miles east of Westport Parkway and FM 156 intersection. We'll begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission members. As stated in the agenda caption, this is a site plan request for a 350,000 square foot distribution center slash warehouse facility. Site's on 32 acres. And currently, there is a single-family house and some accessory buildings located on the site that will be removed prior to a building permit being issued on the site. That's part of the zoning analysis. The property is located within the industrial zoning district, which allows the distribution center slash warehouse use by right. Access is being made by three different driver approaches from Westport Parkway. Westport Parkway is a designated truck route. And Highway 156 is designated truck route. So that will be their truck route, approved truck route traffic flow. The, I'm sorry. Okay, the property is being developed with 340 parking spaces, which exceeds the required parking by approximately 18 spaces. With regards to the landscaping plan, the applicant has provided a landscape planning in accordance with the zoning ordinance. One point of note, part of this application, the applicant's requesting a deviation from the required 20-foot buffer. Essentially, the applicant has a little over 1,300 linear feet of frontage on Westport Parkway. The zoning ordinance requires a 20-foot wide landscape buffer be established along Westport Parkway. And for the majority of the frontage on Westport Parkway, they are complying with that. There's about 225 linear feet that they are asking to reduce that landscape buffer down to 15 feet. They are proposing to increase the number of shrubs and add ornamental trees in the area to make up for the deviation. All other requirements of the landscaping ordinance are being met. Building elevation elevations are meeting design and articulation requirements outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff did do a public notice as required by the ordinance as well, and we've not received any feedback in favor or against the request. I can answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present this evening?
Yes, this is Chad Parrish with Multo Properties.
Good evening, sir. Before we open it up for the public hearing, is there any additional information you would like to share?
No, not specifically. I mean, I just would like to thank the staff and the council for considering our project here. We're pleased with our time working with the city so far, and we're happy to answer any questions. We view this as a pretty standard project, consistent with what is in the area right now. And I just wanted to be on here to answer any questions, and we look forward to working with the City of Hasslet, hopefully.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 6A? And if you do wish to speak, just please type your name into the chat field, and I'll call on you. Okay, recognizing that nobody put their name in the chat field nor spoke up during the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move to discussion. So Commission members, do you have any questions for the city staff or the applicant?
This is Jim Markison.
Okay, Mr. Markison, please go ahead.
Yeah, although this property and project are located in an industrial zone, the objective use of this land was really for mixed use and to serve as a transitional area between other industrial areas and the old town as described in the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. So a question to the applicant, has any attempt been made to include features in your design that will mitigate lighting, noise, traffic, will accommodate additional pedestrian traffic in front of your location?
This is Chad Parrish with the developer applicant here. I can address that question. We have taken some design considerations into account, namely sort of a buffer zone between our project and the neighboring property to the east, which is also owned by the same party that we're purchasing this land from. So we've intentionally stayed far away from the property line there and actually moved our property line closer towards the west to accommodate not impacting trees in the buffer. So we've taken a lot of care to maintain that integrity, you know, on the east side of the property. And in fact, we've also agreed with that owner to limit light that would shine to the east of that property. So a couple of those things have been addressed in our design.
Okay, but the old town area is to the west.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I had that backwards. Well, I'm talking about the western property boundary. There's a creek on the west side. And we put those measures in place on the west side. And our lighting will be full cutoff lighting. So beyond our property line, there will not be any light shining over.
And what's your anticipated traffic that's going to be coming out of there?
Um, you know, Westport Parkway, you know, has pretty good mobility back to I-35. We anticipate most of our traffic will be coming from I-35 and going back to I-35. It's probably the best route for traffic from a truck perspective.
Well, other projects have proven otherwise. So I want to make sure that you understand that our old town is envisioned to be a mixed use with residential, restaurants, retail. How can you assure that you're going to be a good neighbor for us to develop that into the old town environment that we're looking for?
Well, I mean, this is a speculative warehouse. I don't want to make any misconceptions about what it will be because we're going to appeal to the market. The measures we've taken to buffer the west side should help that situation. You know, I mean, as far as being a good neighbor, I mean, the property will be a Class A property. It'll be clean. It'll be well-maintained. But it's an industrial warehouse building. It's likely to have semi-traffic and car traffic. There should be a number of employees that work there. You know, I think the biggest piece is that we've, again, done those measures on the west side there to protect the integrity of the neighboring property. And candidly, the owner of the property was very sensitive to that. I mean, he recognizes a potential higher value, and that's been addressed in our design.
So in the site plan, it appears as though all the truck parking is on the northern side of the building. Is that a correct interpretation as how you've designed this?
Yeah, that's correct.
And is the paving standards on the south side of the buildings the same as the north side? Or is there a more substantial buildup of the paving on the north side of the building?
You know, it's just a, I mean, I would say there's a, you know, the surface area is greater on the north side of the building because we need to have room for the trucks to maneuver. But the paving thickness, if that's your question, is going to also be a thicker paving section so it can handle the weight of the truck.
That's my question, and primarily because what I would really be very disappointed to see was that the future tenant of that building starts parking trucks on the south side of that building.
Oh, yeah, that south parking lot is not designed to be, you know, used for tractor-trailer traffic. It's a five-inch section, and it would deteriorate that concrete very quickly. So I do not anticipate that being an operational way to do things. There would be no reason to do it. The loading docks, there will be no loading docks on the south side of the building.
Well, I'm in the industrial space business, and I know that when the yard gets tight, trucks go everywhere.
Okay.
This is Kyle Bogartis with Langin. From a circulation perspective and the way that some of the site has been laid out, it really would be prohibitive for trucks to be in the front. I can appreciate the comment on some warehouses that we're involved in. There is, yeah, truck mobility, you know, throughout the development. For ours, it really is the western and easternmost drives, the ones that bring the truck traffic to the rear of the building, are the ones that are set up from a radius perspective and a driveway width perspective. Certainly, we can't always make somebody go exactly where they should be going. But from a design and approach perspective, we've, I think, did a decent job addressing that from an overall circulation perspective.
Are there any other enhancements that you could do to limit the mobility of a truck in and out of those, like higher curb heights or medians or things? Obviously, we still need to maintain flow for the fire department. But are there other things that you could potentially do to those drive accesses into what's to be the associate parking that would highly discourage a truck from trying to enter those areas?
Yeah, I think the driveway width is certainly for the center driveway is a little bit narrower than the two truck driveways. And I think that does send a pretty good visual message. We could look to do some other things, but I do think the, you know, the way it's set up with the outermost, from whatever direction you're coming from, being the most opportunistic drives for the trucks to go also helps. Meaning, you know, if you're coming from west to east, there's a driveway that's set up for a truck. And if you're, you know, that's the first driveway that you hit. And also, the same is true if you're heading from east to west. So I think that does help that and should alleviate that as well.
Okay, as part of your spec building plans, are you thinking of putting any welcome center or guard shack in?
This is Chad with Multo Properties. Oh, sorry, I'll address that. I mean, as a speculative improvement, no, we have no plans to do that.
You're not putting any underground infrastructure to a future site or anything like that at this point?
We may stub a conduit, you know, on the other side of the driveway somewhere so that we don't end up having to tear up concrete. But we're not going to establish a plumbing or a guard shack location at this point.
Further the north, you could do that on either of those drives would be highly preferred so that you have ample queuing before you get to the gate.
Yeah, I understand that. That makes sense. We're willing to do that.
Hey, Greg, this is Paul Wallach.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I have a question for Wes. Since this building is in the area called for mixed use, how much of that mixed-use area will be taken up by this proposed development? The one north of Westport.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand your question, Mr. Wallach.
We have in the master, in the comprehensive plan, there's an area designated as MU, mixed-use, north side of Westport Parkway, east of Old Town. Said brown area shows green belt along the west side of that property and the north side of that property. How much of that area is going to be taken up by this proposed development? Is it a mixed-use area? Or is there any of that mixed-use area left on the west side? Or what is it? Is that a whole parcel?
I mean, let's keep in mind that the future land use map is not something that is surveyed out to meet some balanced description. So those green belts and everything that are shown there are just representation of a general idea of what they want to go through that area. I would assume, I wasn't here when they did the comprehensive plan, but it's typical that those green belts follow the floodplain. And there is a lot of floodplain on the site. So it doesn't, to answer the question, if, you know, the building couldn't be in the floodplain, so none of the building would be taking up the greenbelt area.
No, but the point is, is the west end of that building, I can't tell how far it is west of their property line. But the question there that I had is, is that basically it's taken up that whole mixed-use area?
It's taken up a good chunk of it, yes, sir, on the north side of Westport. It is.
Yeah. My concern is this. I understand that the area, you answered me before. It's zoned to allow this sort of development. But I'm still, it has nothing to do with the developer here. This is just, I guess, us chickens in the city. If people went to the effort to develop a comprehensive plan and wanted this area to be mixed-use, but it was never rezoned, I guess, as mixed-use, and now we're basically saying, never mind, we're going to recommend approval to put an industrial spec building out there. And now we're asking the developer to make it as pretty as he can, especially on the west end, to kind of give us some buffer between there and Old Town.
I understand what you're saying, and this goes back to a conversation we had last week between you and I about the fact of that sometimes plans get put on a shelf and they don't implement them properly. So, I mean, it's funny how that made full circle. But let me, for everybody else's benefit, let me explain that comment. The, Mr. Wallach is exactly right. If you do a future land use plan, but you never change the zoning based on it, then we do get in a situation like this. However, we're here tonight. The applicant has submitted a plan that meets the zoning requirements minus those that I talked about earlier. And by right, the use is allowed. So not to take away from Mr. Wallach's point, but to say it bluntly, it's a little late to start worrying about the use on the property now. to say it bluntly, it's a little late to start worrying about the use on the property now.
Oh, I understand that. I'm just looking at the people that were on planning and zoning commission when this this comprehensive plan was developed. And the people that were on an advisory committee. And I'm wondering, you know, should we not? You know, it's kind of like, okay, you served your time. Now I'm serving mine, so I'm going to make a decision for you. I mean, that's kind of how I feel like I'm I'm put into a position of saying, forget what you guys came up with. Sorry, you didn't change that zoning, but you know.
But yeah, well, and it's not, it's not, the city can't just change a landowner's zoning either. It has to come at the landowner's request. The city doesn't have the right to to go in there and just arbitrarily change a landowner's zoning. We can put what we desire the future land use to be. And that's what you see in the future land use plan is a vision of how the land would be used. If if the landowners and the future developers saw fit to follow that plan.
So what I hear you saying then, Greg, is even the area west of this that's labeled Old Town. If a developer wanted to put a building parallel to the old railroad railroad tracks there. They could, if that area in fact is is zoned industrial, which I don't know what it is right now.
Yeah, I think it's art res- it's residential and and, you know, a similar situation happened in Old Town District. Somebody wanted to build a single family house in the middle of what was Old Town. And by our zoning ordinances, even though there was an overlay district, that's what that's what became.
All right. I mean, you were on planning zone when all of this stuff was put together. And I'm sure there was a lot of discussion about it back then. I wasn't there, so.
Yeah, yeah. The future land use plan is a vision of what we would hope to to see come about. And the zoning is what's in place today. And if there's and if an applicant follows the in place zoning, then they and they meet all of the stipulations and the ordinance and then, you know, they they are compliant with the zoning plan.
So if that Nance, uh, Wes, it was part of it, uh, the Nance properties there. And then they had a right of way designated through the property going north of Westport. Am I right?
That is, that is correct. Um, and I I made sure that that was included in the plat uh discussion or the report. The this property was originally platted as a part of the Nance Ranch subdivision, industrial subdivision. And um, some years ago, the the applicant may be familiar with this, but I'm I couldn't find the exact date. But some years ago, the northern portion of the Nance Ranch Industrial Park was taken out of the um, Nance Ranch and created a new subdivision. And that subdivision had a right of way that went right through the middle of it that from Westport, looked like it went from Westport all the way up to 156. When the northern portion of that subdivision was essentially vacated and replotted. That right of way went away. The applicants requesting the same thing on the southern portion of this replat as well.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Morrison, I would like the the planning is only commission members to go to executive session to have this discussion. And so for those members or for those people who have dialed into this call, the planning is only commissioners are going to drop off. We're going to join a separate call to go into executive session to have a discussion on this topic. And we will be joined by the city staff and the city attorney. And then we will return to this call and then we'll pick up this agenda item. So please, you know, appreciate there'll be a pause while we do this, but we will be returning to this call as soon as we finish the executive session.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Rob Alabon, the city attorney. Just for the record, would you go ahead and read the executive session language that we're going to adjourn into executive session pursuant to section 551.071 and and to seek legal advice to the city attorney and then to, I guess, state the time that we're going to do so.
Yes, sir, Mr. Alavon, thank you. So the planning is only commission reserves the right to adjourn into executive session during the course of the meeting to seek legal advice from its attorney regarding any item on the posted agenda as authorized by section 551 dot zero seven one of the Texas government code. Mr. Alavon, I would like to have your participation in executive session at this time. The time is 7:04 PM. We will, we will temporarily adjourn the regular meeting and to go into executive session and return at the conclusion of the executive session.
All right. Hey Greg, before you do that. Maybe Diana help me out here. So I've got a go to meeting window open here for the regular session. Do I close out of that?
Yes, you close that and open a new session.
Close out of that totally, get into the other one Diana sent us and then come back and get into this guy.
Yes, sir. All of that is correct.
I muted myself. I said, excuse me for my ignorance on that. So thanks for the clarification.
Before we reopen, reopen the open session, I'm going to do roll call to make sure all of the commission members and city staff and the city attorney have returned to our regular session meeting. Ms. Snidiger? Mr. Wallach.
President.
Mr. Hillborn. Mr. McCusson.
President.
Mr. Flaxburg, are you still in attendance? Mr. Hayes?
Mr. Hillborn.
All right, Mr. Hillborn, thank you. All right, Mr. Hillborn, thank you. And Mr. Caddish is present. Ms. Snidderger, have you returned?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. And Ms. Buchanan, have you returned?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Morrison, are you present?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Alavan, have you returned?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the executive session is now closed. We're returning back to the to regular session, so the meeting will continue. The time is 7:41 PM. And we're still addressing Agenda Item 6A. We've had the staff presentation. We've opened and closed the public hearing. We're still in discussion. And if there are any further questions from commission members, or either the city staff or the applicant, that would be the time to ask those. If there is no further discussion, then we could consider and act on a recommendation.
I have a question on page 24. There's this little circle, red circle on the page, and it says upon conversation with in a box. What is that?
Most likely.
Hey. This is Kyle Bogart with Langen Engineering. We had some discussions with the fire marshal about the fire lanes in that area. And I assume that may have been a note from that, but I'm not 100% positive.
There was, yes, I can, I can address that, Ms. Snidderger. There was a discussion of the fire department. They had some concerns about some radius turns. And if the applicant's engineer wants to jump in, but I believe what they're going to do is they're going to do a rolled curb so that the fire truck can make the turn. If I've misstated that, anybody on the call that knows better than, please correct me.
That's correct, Wes. This is Kyle from Langen.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? So I have a question for the applicant, if nobody else jumps in here from me. But so for the applicant, you had mentioned shielding the light to ensure that all the light stays within the property boundary. And I assume you meant on the western boundary when you said that. You said east, but based on how you followed up on the talking about the western boundary instead of east, I assume you meant the eastern boundary. Is is that what you intended to do is to shield the lighting so it wouldn't spill over off the property line? Is that correct?
Yes, this is Chad Parrish with Multo. That's correct. I misspoke. I have my directions backwards. And we are going to shield the light on the west side.
Okay. Would you be willing to consider shielding the light on all the all the boundaries?
Um.
There's a couple of things that, you know, industrial space can be very bright, and it needs to be for multiple reasons. A lot of people walk into and from the building, you know, at different times of day and night. And you got a lot of trucks out there that you need to be able to see, you know, the lights on, you know, the trailer numbers on them and things like that.
Sure.
But, but, you know, with with our hope that, you know, sometimes there'd be some additional development to your to your boundaries, you know, having having a nice presence is important. If there's just if it just looks like daylight out there all the time, you know, that, you know, that it can just be kind of annoying to see such bright lights spilling across on all boundaries or out into the street, wall pack lights that are unsealed, and just look like big bright moons. Every time you look at them trying to go down the road and, you know, just would like to understand what your interest or what your willingness would be to maybe do some shielding on all sides of the building.
Yes, sir. Again, it's Chad Parrish for the record. We're happy to look at that and accommodate that. I mean, we use LED lights. The nature of the LED lights is they actually don't throw light as far as historical lights would have otherwise thrown in. So we do limit that. And we really try to design the property to where only the paved areas are lit. And then beyond that, you know, the light level dissipates down to the property line. So we have no interest in lighting in the property line that's, you know, whatever, 50 feet away from the pavement areas. So, I mean, we will comply with the code, of course. We'll also make an effort to screen those lights and shield them. I think when we design our project, you'll be happy with the light levels that are off the property.
Thank you for that consideration. I appreciate that.
You bet.
So this is Paul Wallach. I have a question about the lighting. Since we don't have a lighting plan. So your lighting plan along the driveway, all the way around the perimeter of the building, will be pole mounted lights spaced accordingly along the route, the truck route on that driveway?
You know, our intent would be to try and get the lights on the east and west driveways to provide the light level from the from a light fixture mounted on the wall. That serves a couple of purposes. Frankly, it's just less expensive for us. And it also doesn't create an eyesore or a bullseye for a semi truck. So we'll try to do those with wall mounted lights. And I'm fairly confident we'll be able to achieve that level of lighting without having poles on the east and west drives. In the back, on the north side, I don't think we're going to get away from poles back there. Because again, as I mentioned a second ago, the the LED lights don't cast light as far as other fixtures used to do that. And so we're we likely will have poles on the north side.
That's fine. So will the lights be sensitive to movement? Or will they just be on all of that? Can they go off when there's no truck movement?
We will not have the, it's not our intent to have the lights in the parking areas be motion sensor activated. They will be on a photo cell. So they'll just be on at night when it's dark out.
We looked at that differently, Greg, on another facility. Making motion sensitive. Remember that? Greg? Diana, can you still hear me?
Yes, sir, I can. Chair Caddish, are you on the line?
What happened to him?
If you would all please, let's just take a moment and let me determine if he's having a technical problem.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, we can. There he is.
I apologize. After a long day at work, my battery died using the same headsets. I apologize.
I think Mr. Wallach had a question for you, Chair.
Yeah, I did hear your question. And it was regarding the other project where we looked at motion sensitive lighting in a large drop lot environment. And so I did hear your question, the applicant. Obviously, it's not something, you know, not a defined requirement. It would certainly be a nice thing to see in place where you see your lights, you know, some energy conservation and a number of different reasons that, you know, lights aren't on unless they're needed to be on.
Chad Parrish, again, just to address that. I mean, I haven't seen that feature in a parking lot. And so without, you know, maybe understand a little bit more, I'm hesitant to commit to anything here. Happy to consider it, but standard, you know, my prior projects has been that it's not only a traffic issue, but it can also be a security issue in some cases where they, users of the property, you know, need to feel like they have enough security to where people aren't tempted to come up and bother the property or their products or whatever.
Yep. And there probably still may be some wildlife and stuff to the north, which would make it complicated to put motion sensor because of off the property because it probably get tripped because of things like that as well.
Right, that's true. I mean, I can say this. We hear the commission's concern about light levels, and we will, you know, be cognizant of that in our design. But that particular issue, I'm not seeing the motion sensor in a parking lot. And so I'm just a little hesitant to commit something like that because I don't know if that's consistent with the market.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments that any of the commission members would like to make at this time?
I have a question about the landscape plan. We've got landscape. And Wes, I get question, did you say this was not totally in compliance?
That's correct. The, as I stated, and let me go back to those numbers so that I don't misquote anything. The landscape, zoning warrants requires that on along Westport Parkway, there'd be a 20 foot wide landscape buffer. The applicant is providing that. The applicant has a total of 1,387 linear feet of frontage along Westport Parkway. Of that 1,387 linear feet, all of it but 225 linear feet is meeting the 20 foot landscape buffer. The the 225 linear feet that is not is proposed at a 15 foot wide landscape buffer. They are proposing to do an increased number of shrubs and add ornamental trees to to that area to offset that.
Okay. They're throwing trees on the east end of the building, I guess, along the drive over there. But there's nothing on the west end of the building between the building and potentially old town area. Is that a flood, a flood? I'm not sure what that area is. I just, is it flood plain? Is it on the west side of that building? I'm just looking at the landscape plan and can't really tell. I guess to the developer.
Yeah, this is Chad Parrish again for the record. It is, actually, it's a relatively, I'd call it medium density stand of trees over there. We've taken a lot of care to not impact those existing trees for the very reason that you're concerned about. Our the person, the person that we're buying this property from has also been very sensitive to preserving the integrity property that he owns to the west. So we're doing very delicate and limited tree removal over there. And, you know, that's going to continue to be our plan going forward to satisfy everybody's concern. But beyond the pavement limits is an area that does have some floodplain impacts. And there's some slope transitions for grading. So it's going to be a little difficult to plant trees in there because it's a, you know, floodplain area, and it's going to be on kind of a slope. But in my my personal opinion, there's a nice stand of trees there right now to buffer it. And we're going to take a lot of care to maintain the integrity of those trees.
Well, am I looking at the tree removal plan? And it looks like right on the, of course, that's where the where the driveway, it looks more like the X driveway, there's a bunch of trees to be removed. And then are there existing trees there to save, kind of in a little blocked out area? I'm having a hard.
That's correct. You're looking at that right.
Taking a bunch of trees out there, taking a bunch of trees up in the, I guess, what would be the northwest corner of that property, all up in there, removing all of those trees up there, it looks like. I mean, I'm assuming I'm reading you. I'm sorry if I'm not reading this right. But that's what it looks like to me. We've taken out a bunch of trees?
Sir, the trees that are marked with a circle with an X are the ones to be removed.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah. See, I think you are looking at that correctly.
Yeah. But, okay, so in your opinion, it would be much more, it'd be, again, not impossible, but difficult to provide a landscape buffer along the west side of the west driveway, let's say, that would buffer between there and that potentially future old town. Could that be done?
My opinion is that it's already there. What this doesn't show you, sir, is the existing trees that are off the property line. We're just showing you trees that are on the property.
Oh, okay.
We've intentionally, we've intentionally left for the remainder parcel, a lot of the existing trees. It's not really clear here because, again, we're only showing you the trees that are on our property that we have to identify in our tree survey. But the reason that this property line is established the way it is on the west side is 100% because of the tree preservation goals. We've identified the property to maintain the trees as much as possible. I can appreciate that. It looks like we're removing a lot, but there's going to be a lot there remaining.
But but not on your property. They're on the other property outside, west of your property line.
Correct.
And so we hope they stay there. Okay. All right.
I have a quick question. All those trees, you're not including those in your landscaping plan, are you? Those are above and beyond?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Our new plantings are shown on the landscape drawing, which are mostly going to be along the frontage. We've identified all the trees, you know, per the requirements of the tree survey. And we've shown which ones will remain and which ones are to be removed. So if the if the trees are off the property, which may be is your question, those would not be shown on here. And our plantings would be in addition to those that are off our property.
Okay, I guess my question, so the trees that are back there that you are keeping are part of the landscape plan, correct? The amount of trees and?
Yeah.
And it complies with the landscaping plan, correct?
Yeah, correct.
This is Matt Hayes. I have one question. Looking at the variance for the the buffer on the on the south side of the property, what other options did you look at before this design? Did you look at anything else that wouldn't require a variance?
Yeah, this is Kyle Bogart with Langen Engineering. We've talked about a few of the the site constraints, you know, one of which is the floodplain, which is on our north and western boundaries. So we did quite a bit of concept planning and alternate layouts and trying to figure out the the way to get the project needed in here and and address all these existing conditions. So we definitely did look at some other layouts, you know, at the end of the day, we do have a bit of a grade change from Westport Parkway down to the down to the site. So some of that landscaping where we are infringing on the buffer, wouldn't really be seen anyway from the from the Westport Parkway. So I think we did, we did try to accommodate as best we could. But there is, there is some constraints, obviously, on the north side of the property that kind of forces us to be a little bit closer in that part of the site to Westport Parkway.
Thank you.
This is Paul Wallach again. Can we talk about a sidewalk in front of this along Westport Parkway? I think you're asking for a variance. And if we wanted to provide maybe future access for people to come out of your building and walk to the west, if we ever put an old town there, if there's restaurants? If we ever put an old town there, if there's restaurants or anything over there? Is there room to put a sidewalk out there to, to, to the engineer?
Mr. Wallach, if I can interject real quick, that the sidewalk variance portion is a part of the plat. We, I have no problem answering those questions and talking about that now. I just want to make sure we're all understanding that the sidewalk is tied to the plat because it's in the subdivision regs. And, but we can talk about it now. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
All right, okay, then, then we don't need to talk about it later. Very good. So, Mr. Parrish, I guess that question is to you. The sidewalk, who knows if we'll have old town over there, but if we do, it might, it would provide some access to people for them to walk over there.
Yes, sir. I, as far as room, I'm not entirely sure. Maybe Kyle Bogart's have to answer if that sidewalks intend to go in the right of way or if it's going on the, on the property itself. Our, our variance request has more to do with just kind of operationally. It would be a sidewalk to nowhere at this moment. You know, it can create an opportunity for, you know, maybe some future liability. If a pedestrian is trying to get out and walk on that sidewalk and he has nowhere to go, they might jump off into the street, which we wouldn't want a safety issue there. So, you know, I've actually mentioned the sidewalk again to the owner and he's, he's somewhat in opposition to it because he doesn't feel like, you know, would attract the right kind of a pedestrian environment. So yeah, I don't know if that answers your question. It's my opinion on the matter. I just, the sidewalks that kind of start and stop at the property line, my opinion seems to invite just a little bit more of a risk than they do a benefit.
Yeah, this is Kyle from Lang, Langen as well. The, the, you know, if it was in the right of way, you know, there obviously that's within the city limits there. But a city jurisdiction, but I don't think any of the other developments that recently went in on the, on the south side were required to have sidewalks. So there's a little bit of a disconnect in, in, in the need then maybe. Because I'm pretty sure those projects didn't have to put in sidewalks on the, just on the south side as well.
And they're all east of the bridge, too.
Correct, yeah, which is a bit of a barrier, too.
Well, but they also didn't, but what, what we looked at, you know, was a future old town area. Once again, I know it's all a concept plan. I'm well aware of it, just asking the question.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Can we talk again? Did we, if we, did we make any changes to what they're requesting? I'm trying to figure that out now.
It's not a planned development, so we can't, we can't make changes. We can ask that they consider things.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, did we, did we want to put anything in the motion that we ask them to consider? The lighting?
That would be the only item that I'm aware of.
Do we want them to consider a sidewalk?
You can either agree to the variance request that they've asked for, or you can deny it. Deny the variance in your motion.
The variance request is in the plat. You said, okay. So that's in the plat.
That's correct, sir. This motion would not include anything to do with the sidewalk. It would be on the next item.
All right. The land, the buffer, that's in this plan, though. The landscape, landscape buffer is in this plan, right?
That is correct.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend the city council approval of the site plan with, with an exception of asking them to have downcast lighting around the entire building.
And then what about the requested variance on the landscape buffer? Or do you? Are you in agreement that the, and also approve the landscape buffer variance or not? Do you need to include something on that?
I, I would approve it the way it is.
Okay, there's been a motion to recommend approval of agenda item 6A with the requested variance with the additional request that the developer used downcast lighting throughout the entire property.
I'll second it. This is Dennis.
It's been seconded. Do a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, Chair Caddish. I need a point of clarification. The motion, the motion stated by Ms. Snedeker said with exception, downcast lighting around the entire building. And when you rephrased it, you said around the entire property. So I need to have clarification on that point, please.
Thank you for recognizing that. Ms. Snedeker, could you clarify your request of the downcast lighting? Where do you?
Around the entire property.
And that motion was seconded. Is, does that second still remain?
Yes.
Are we ready to do a vote, Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Snedeker.
Wait, wait, great. You're talking about lighting around the property. You mean the whole property perimeter? I'm confused.
Ms. Snedeker said that the, in, anywhere on the property, she would like the applicant to consider using downcast lighting throughout the entire property.
On the property, okay, not the perimeter of the property. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, just making sure we understood.
And I'm sorry, does this include acceptance of their request for a variance on the landscaping?
That was the motion that Ms. Snedeker made.
Okay.
Any other questions before we do a vote? Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Hillborn?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yes.
And Mr. Caddish is a yes as well. The motion passes. Okay, moving on, agenda item 6B. One second to get back to my right screen so I can read it. Scroll back to the beginning of our documents here. Agenda item 6B, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider and act on a recommendation regarding a preliminary replat of lot 1, block 1, Westport Parkway. Addition being a replat of lots 3 to 7, block 1, Nance Ranch Industrial Park. The property is located on the north side of Westport Parkway, approximately a half mile east of Westport Parkway and FM 156 intersection. We're going to begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. We've already talked about this replat somewhat, so I'll be brief. But as stated, this is a, it's a preliminary plat of a replat. Originally, this was Nance, Nance Ranch Industrial Park. It was plotted in two different blocks, one being, or being a total of 12 lots. According to the appraisal district's records, at some point, blocks, block 2, lots 1 through 5 have previously replatted. Property is requesting to remove lots 3 through 7 out of block 1 and create this new subdivision. That's a total of 32 acres. Also, again, we've already covered the right of way that bisected the original plaque. The, as a part of this request, they're asking if that right of way be abandoned. Staff reviewed the, also, the preliminary application includes a variance to the subdivision ordinance requiring the sidewalk along Westport Parkway. And staff reviewed the plats along with preliminary utility and drainage improvements. Found everything to be in compliance with city standards and in compliance with the Texas local government code. I can answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Morrison. Is, does the applicant have any additional comments that they would like to add before we open the public hearing?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. So again, if you have an interest in speaking during the public hearing, if you'll enter your name in the chat field, that'll give me the information. I need to call on you to speak. Give you a chance to do that now if you desire. Okay, recognizing that no one spoke up or entered the name in the chat field. During the public hearing time, we will close the public hearing and move to discussion. So do any of the commission members have any questions for the city staff or the applicant? Hey, if there's no discussion, would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion, recommend the city council the approval of the preliminary plat for Westport Parkway addition with the variance from section 3.9 requiring sidewalk along Westport Parkway.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Dennis?
Okay, so there's been motion made to approve with the variance of the sidewalk being allowed. Then seconded, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Hillborn?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yes.
Greg Caddish is a yes as well. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, for your patience this evening. Moving on, agenda item 6C, discuss, consider and act on, on amending the regular meeting date of the Planning and Zoning Commission set meetings. And so a little background, so this is an item that I brought before our city staff earlier last week. And spoke briefly with both the mayor and Ms. Morrison about this. So as far back as I can remember enduring, you could probably go further beyond that. But, you know, the 18 or 19 years that I've been on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we've been meeting on Monday evenings. And so for a bit of a selfish reason, I've bringing this request before the commission members. I have been missing scout meetings for a number of years and some very important ones. I'm missing a very, very important one for my daughter this evening and for, in the interest of serving the city. And I would like to move that we move the regular meeting to the sec, the last Tuesday of the month. That will allow me to, you know, support my family and to, you know, do the things there. But it will also ensure that the application process for those who are bringing business for the city allows the proper time to, for those things to go through the system so that we can act on them properly and still get them to the city council by their next regular meeting. The, the other benefit, and it's, you know, I don't know if everybody sees it this way, but we typically get our packets on Friday. And then we're having a meeting on a Monday evening. And it doesn't give us a lot of time to look through those things over and prepare questions and thoughts before our Monday evening meeting. And given us that one extra day, in my opinion, is just an additional benefit if we were to move our regular meeting to, to the last Tuesday of the month. So that's the background. That is the request. And if the, if there's support of that, we would need a motion to make that change.
That one question, we'd still, we'd still get our packets on that preceding Friday. That one slipped to Monday, right?
That is my understanding. We would still receive the packages on, of information and the agenda on the Friday prior to the Tuesday meeting.
Okay, that is correct. It wouldn't change anything for staff.
And were you able to, Mr. Morrison, were you able to confirm that that would not create any hardships for the city staff by moving the meeting to Tuesday evening?
Um, yeah, we, I briefly talked to Ms. Buchanan about that and neither one of us had a conflict. I did not have a chance to talk to Travis. I apologize Travis Orthad about this. But the, we also looked at all the other boards and commission calendars. And I believe, Diane, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the only other conflict that, citywide conflict that we would have would be a, a senior activity on Tuesday nights. Is that correct?
Well, it's actually yoga, but yeah, it's actually yoga, but, you know, they could always switch it over to the Monday night. If that worked for them, but, you know, boards and commissions and council meetings are priorities over other activities using the community center. So this has priority over that.
Mr. Antonazio, is there, are there any conflicts if we were to make a motion to move the meetings to the last Tuesday of the month? Does that create any hardships for you as well?
That does not. You may want to include Mr. Chambers in that conversation as well as he attends these meetings, too.
And is Mr. Chambers on the call this evening?
I am, sir. I'm, I am not typically a required participant, so I would defer. But I don't have any conflicts either, if that does change.
Okay, thank you for your input and response to the question.
Chair Caddish.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I did want to bring up that in November and December, typically, we don't meet during the fourth week because we only have one council meeting during the month. And we have been moving up planning and zoning a week after that one council meeting instead of meeting, you know, during holidays and things like that. And so can we have the opportunity, can SAP have the opportunity to bring back the dates for November and December to our next meeting for your consideration?
Yes, ma'am. That would be, that would be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or discussion?
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, well, that would be fantastic.
This is Paul Wallach. I'm not sure how to word it, but I would make a motion that we move the regularly scheduled planning and zoning meetings from 6:30 Monday, on the last Monday of the month, to 6:30 PM the last Tuesday of every month, with the exceptions of the holidays that might need adjustment.
The motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Been seconded. Do a roll call vote. Ms. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Hillborn?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, and I certainly give you my sincere thanks for your consideration of that.
I would like, I would like to say for all of the years that you've dedicated to the city on this board, that's the least that we can do.
Well, thank you. All right, moving on, let's see, I guess we're on to agenda item nine. And that is status of current projects and developments. I know that there's a report in our packet. Unless there's a specific question, we aren't going to ask Mr. Morrison to go through those things. So that's more for your leisurely review. Future agenda items. So could we at some point start talking about a lighting ordinance?
Yes, sir. That, that made my list today. And we'll also have, we've got a couple of applications for some replats and for some replats and other plats primarily in the ETJ right now that will likely be on your next agenda.
Okay, good. Are there any other workshop topics that we should be thinking about as we continue to review ordinances?
Would it? I don't know if I don't know, meeting on, on this go to meeting may not work, but someday sit down and have the whole planning commission talk about this comprehensive plan and I don't know about the strategic plan, but at least comprehensive plan in the future. And we need to consider any possible actions.
Yeah, I, you know, actually, I think, you know, with the number of new members that are on the Planning and Zoning Commission, it might, you know, it might make sense for people to get oriented to what the current zoning maps are, the thoroughfare plans, the the, you know, future land use plans. And you're welcome to contact city staff and, and if they have free time to go and visit with them about that. But, you know, maybe if that doesn't work, maybe Mr. Morrison, we could spend 15 minutes or so one night at the, after a regular meeting minutes, agenda items, and just do a comprehensive review of some of those documents and what they are. And then they could go out on the internet and look at those.
Definitely, we can, we can put something together.
Okay, moving on, any other calendar discussions, agenda item 11 that we need to talk about today? Here, we'll look at your, the adjusted dates for the November, December meetings. And that will also affect the capital improvements advisory committing meetings as well. Do we need to bring that up on an agenda item at some point?
I, I wouldn't think so. Diana, did I overstep or?
No, not at all. I'm, I was just going to say it's as it's called, but let staff, let us review exactly what is in the ordinance about CIAC. And if we need something official, then the next time you meet, we, we can have that on the agenda.
Okay, because the next one of those would occur in May. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if nothing more on agenda item 11, moving on to agenda item 12, Ms. Snedeker?
I make a motion we adjourn.
We are adjourned. The time is 8:23 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.